Okay, good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Hold Order. It's Monday, November 2nd. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colebrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. I don't believe we got minutes, did we? Did we receive minutes?
No, you didn't receive the minutes yet. They weren't quite ready. When the packets were ready, they are ready now, but will be at the next council, next committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. Next, we have public input. If I do have some instructions I need to read. City takes public comment via email, written format, and verbally. On October 12, 2020, the Urbana City Council approved new rules for public input during remote electronic meetings. These rules are listed on each agenda for city-sponsored public meetings. Members of the public may join meetings as either a Zoom webinar or telephone participant to make verbal input. This is a time for committee members to listen to the public. Discussion, debate, or commentary will not take place during this period. Public comments are limited to four minutes per person. Public input will total no more than one hour unless shortened or extended by majority vote of the members present. The meeting chair has the option of giving priority to speakers who wish to comment on specific agenda items upon which a vote will be taken. A person may speak once during the meeting and may not cede time to another person. We ask that you address your comments to the public body as a whole and maintain respect for the process and respect for members of the council, city staff, and general public. The meeting chair or member of the public body has the authority to call a speaker out of order for using abusive, harassing, threatening, or defamatory remarks. If the speaker refuses to cease the remarks, the meeting chair may mute the speaker's microphone and will ask the speaker to send the remainder of the remarks via email for inclusion in the meeting record. Thank you for helping us conduct respectful and productive meetings. For webinar participants, if you wish to speak during public input, please raise your hand and use the Raise Your Hand button and wait to be called on by the presiding officer. You must state your first and last name for the meeting record. Telephone participants, if you wish to speak, raise your hand by pressing star nine once when you are called on by the host or presiding officer. You must state your name and, yeah, your first name and last name for meeting record. Email input. Public comments must be sent prior to the closing of the meeting record. That's at the time of the adjournment unless otherwise noted to the following address: citycouncil@urbanaillinois.us. The subject line of the email must include the words "public input" and the meeting date. Emailed public comments labeled as such will be incorporated into the public meeting record. Copies of emails will be posted after the meeting minutes have been approved. Okay. With that out of the way, I do see some hands raised. We'll start with Emily Connor.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mayor Marlin and city council members. My name is Emily Connor, and I am reaching out to you on behalf of Ruby's and other local gaming cafes in Urbana. We would like to ask you to consider approving the addition of a sixth BGT in Urbana Gaming Cafes. As a company, we have seventeen locations across the state of Illinois, and all of our other communities are taking advantage of additional licensing fees and tax revenues from simply adding one additional video gaming terminal. We would love for the city of Urbana to be able to take advantage of these same benefits. The approval of this proposal would also help us as a business to offset rising tax fees, the continued increase to minimum wage, as well as to provide additional revenue to offset being closed for one hundred and six days this year to COVID-19 mitigations. As we entered another round of mitigations effective today, with reduced hours and cessation of indoor services, the addition of a sixth video gaming terminal would be extremely helpful. I appreciate the time of the council this evening, and I'm hopeful to see the proposed ordinance on the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bo Barber.
Hi, can you hear me? Oh, hi, my name is Bo Barber, and I just wanted to kind of bring up again the topic of utility shut offs. I commend the council for, you know, writing that resolution, and I want to thank you, Mayor Marlin, very much for delivering that in person to J.P. Pritzker. I did want to clarify, though, because on that day that he was visiting in Champaign County there, he told a very blatant lie about him not being able to do anything in regard to the governor's powers. I wish I would have brought up the actual article that it is in the Illinois Constitution, but in the Illinois Constitution, he has the executive powers to put a moratorium on, you know, services, utilities, evictions, and that day, he tried to sway the public or try and fool the public and everyone on saying that, you know, "Oh, I can't really do too much about it," but he can. And as we're seeing sharp rises right now in COVID-19 cases, you know, it's even more important to try and prevent utility shut offs because if people's powers shut off, they can't, you know, if people's powers or waters shut off, they can't wash their hands, right? Which is an important thing that the CDC says people need to be doing in order to prevent, you know, infection and spread of the infection. But additionally, you know, if you lose power, what are you going to do? I'm going to go, you know, I lose my power, I'm going to go find whatever shelter I can, especially as the, you know, the temperatures start to drop. We're lucky we have somewhat warm week this week, but, you know, last week was cold, and soon we're going to be getting colder, and I believe it's like the annual winter, like a utility moratoriums that go into place so people don't have to go cold, as far as I recall, doesn't happen until December. You know, shut offs have already been happening since September. We're not going to know the numbers for October until November 15th. And that's going to be a big problem because, like, as of right now, like, in Champaign County alone, there was over, well, there was like over two hundred disconnections for non-pay that already occurred. And although lie heap is, you know, it's good that we have lie heap and that it's able to help participants, and and I guess for anybody that is listening, although, you know, it's best for you to tell your constituents as well, for those on the board, which are on the council, you know, tell your constituents about lie heap and getting in contact with them because then they can get protected from utility shut offs. But even with that, there's still several challenges that occur with trying to get the paperwork to go through, do all that stuff, and, you know, people are like, "Well, just fill out the paperwork and you're fine." Well, as people in the Cunningham Township have attested, it's like there's people that, you know, maybe have some issues or challenges or physical disabilities, or just, you know, a lot of other things that happen in life that make it impossible, you know, or very difficult for them to do, especially during a pandemic. So I commend you for, again, writing that resolution, and I encourage you to keep speaking out against the governor, you know, for the blatant lies that he told the community last week, and I want to thank you again for that. And yeah, remember to tell your constituents about lie heap because although having a moratorium is the ideal thing, we got to do whatever we can because if we have a moratorium, we don't have to worry about folks trying to go through all that paperwork on lie heap. They're not going to get their powers shut off. But all in my comments of that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Ellen Axelrod.
All righty, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, well, greetings from the city of Decatur. I have just spoken to their city council as well. They have had the most utility shut offs in central Illinois as a city, and their positivity rate is up to over fifteen percent. They're in the process of trying to figure out what they can do, and I gave them some information, including the resolution that was discussed. So I want to point out from the city, the source of the error that was pointed out regarding Patrick Hayes' legal opinion that was sourced from city staff. There were multiple weeks for that to be corrected. We're all trying to do the best that we can. I hope that we can move forward from that. The other thing from the memo is that the city, even as a home rule government, cannot initiate a moratorium by ordinance. That is true. You have to listen very carefully to what I say next. The city ordinance for Champaign that allows for utility service continuation, Order 12-39, or Municipal Code 12-39 (26), does so not by ordinance, but by mayoral order. That is legally distinct from the ordinance. So as far as the memo's accuracy goes, it is correct. As far as the home rule municipality's ability to stop utility shut offs and ensure utility service continuation, as Mayor Deb Finan has said multiple times, the city ordinance 12-39 (26) is sourced from state statutes. Getting back to an earlier comment about Governor J.B. Pritzker's very baffling statement when he had come to Champaign, the Fox News Network here actually fact-checked the governor. It wasn't hard to do. I'd been telling everybody about it for months. It is 3305, sorry, 20ILCS 3305 plus seven parentheses 12. And it says in their own report, which has been up and is unredacted, or unretracted, that the governor may issue an executive order with emergency powers to ensure the continuation of goods and services, regulates and continue goods and services. I might have gotten the words slightly wrong. I'm outside so that I don't disrupt the Decatur City Council. But I think that is pretty clear. There was an email from Bill Brown, thank you for reaching out, about the gap in our existing lie heap system. To the best of my knowledge, that is true, question mark. We're still trying to figure that out as a county regarding undocumented immigrants' ability to get lie heaps. But I think the most telling thing was when the administrator for CUPHD, Julie Pride, was on the radio with State Rep. Carol Ammons, talking about the need for our social service providers to have an automatic moratorium to ensure that our residents are protected. Because while there has been an increase in the amount of lie heap funding, there has not been an increase in the staff that processes the applications. This has led to other counties, for example, having backlogs as people were made more aware of the lie heap application process. But more importantly, the data shows that this process is not safe. Adjust to reiterate, over two thousand cases a day since October 7th, over three thousand cases a day since October 15th, over three thousand cases a day since October 24th, and over six thousand cases a day since October 28th. Forgive me, I bungled one of the numbers for the threshold. I undervalued it. It's worse than what I just said. But the point is that this situation is going to get worse unless if we are rigorous about the information that we act on. So again, mayoral order enabled by ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Christopher Hansen.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Hi, my name is Christopher Hansen. I live in Urbana. I want to speak about your number nine item on the agenda, discussion of the CPRB ordinance. There's some history here that I think is being missed, and the city administrator Carol Mitten said early on that she was devoted to keeping the CPRB on target with its ordinance, but just ten days ago, we saw her try to bully a complainant into an appeals hearing that hadn't been properly arranged, and then we saw the mayor lie about the reason that the hearing couldn't take place. And now that Mitten can't have her way, she's pouting, and she wants to throw all of these police complaints in the garbage.
Could you try to make your comments less personal and direct your comments to the council as a whole? If you look at our organizational chart, you'll see the mayor and council at the top, so we're actually responsible for staff. So if you have a complaint against staff, you can direct it to us.
Yeah, can you reset the time that I lost there?
No.
I'm sorry, no?
I'll give you an extra fifteen seconds.
Okay. The issue was brought up of police officers speeding and violating traffic laws as being frivolous. At the very same meeting, you voted on the Vision Zero Resolution on reducing traffic fatalities. Urbana cares about traffic safety so much that we have multiple commissions for it, such as the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission and the Traffic Commission. And haven't you discussed the problem of speeding on particular roads at multiple city council meetings this year? Don't you have a $20,000 radar trailer for this purpose? In the past year, I've seen the Urbana City Attorney warn the council about liability problems for the city because he felt a parking lot layout did not conform with code. We saw the city attorney warn the council about liability problems for the city if we were to keep certain old growth trees in the city right of way. And this morning, we saw the city attorney concerned about legal liability because a member of the zoning board of appeals made an utterance about a development case that will soon be before the plan commission. So now we're talking about Urbana police officers flying through residential areas in their cruisers at forty-five to fifty miles an hour where kids are playing outside, no lights, no sirens, flying through stop signs, and we're calling the issue frivolous. Isn't it exhausting being so hypocritical and stumbling through life having no clear principles or values? Have you considered what we're teaching our children by acting so unscrupulously? According to the city administrator, many of the police complaints allege that the Urbana Police Department has violated the police complaint process itself. That type of complaint is absolutely the most important type of complaint that could possibly be presented to the CPRB. We could have a complaint about murder or rape or some kind of terrible thing that a police officer did, and if the Urbana Police Department isn't following the complaint process, then it doesn't matter. So why would you want to throw in the garbage issues of the complaint process itself not being followed? Why would you consider that to be frivolous or a nuisance complaint? That's one of the most important things that you could possibly consider. And I think the reason that our city administrator and our chief want to throw these complaints in the garbage is because when they come to light and when they're examined, it's going to become so painfully obvious what they've been doing for months in terms of violating the complaint process, violating the complaint ordinance, and denying complaints and denying access to the complaint process. And I believe that's part of the reason that our city administrator has tried to demonstrate so much administrative cost on her end because going back and trying to redo the work that they should have done six, eight months ago has become very complicated for them. And if they hadn't made all those violations from the beginning, we wouldn't be in this situation. The next thing I want to bring up is the issue of FOIA and all of the violations that the council and the mayor and the city legal are now painfully aware of. It's all been well documented, and we have numerous letters from the Illinois Attorney General indicating that the city has violated FOIA repeatedly, that the city has attempted to charge hundreds and thousands of dollars of fees upon individuals, and you have letters from myself, but they've done that to other people, too. So I'm wondering why no one has issued a type of response for this. No apologies have been issued, no explanations have been given on how the city and its staff conspired to defraud the residents of Urbana. Are you guys just going to ignore it like you ignore everything else? Or are we going to talk about it? As a reminder, I'm open for a chat with you guys anytime. You can vote to cancel the rules, and we can have a talk right now. We can discuss all of this and get it settled whenever you want.
Very much. Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. First up, it has been more than two weeks since Chief Seraphin announced that he had assigned firearms to investigate the issue of this safety mechanism on Officer Eric Raff's rifle when he assaulted Aliyah Lewis. When are we going to hear about the findings? UPD has all the footage available, and they have the real guns to compare it with. It really should not be that hard to see if his safety was on or off. My guess is it's just taking that long because UPD is probably hoping that this will be forgotten, or they are coming up with some way to justify what happened. So I hope you guys follow up with it. Next, I'd like to comment on the abysmal moral values of the city as portrayed by the deceptive nature of city leadership. Last week during the CPRB discussion, Mayor Marlin said that the hearing scheduled for October 23rd was canceled due to the appellant having scheduling problems. Well, this is not true. The meeting was canceled because city administrator Carol Mitten failed to follow the rules stated in the CPRB ordinance regarding scheduling hearings. So Mayor Marlin, were you lied to regarding the reason for the cancellation, or did you yourself deliberately decide to lie to the public? Once again, Urbana leadership just cannot admit to wrongdoing. They will not say, "Sorry, we messed up. What can we do to make it right?" More deception. During the CPRD discussion, the speaker tried to elicit sympathy and shock by throwing out numbers like forty-two thousand, hundred and twenty thousand. Well, this seems rather manipulative, especially since there was no mention that many of these appeals were going to be grouped as a single hearing. Throughout the whole discussion, there was one point that really didn't make sense. It was mentioned several times that there should be some kind of triage or alternative means to handle the type of complaints that Mayor Marlin called frivolous. First up, complaints like officer speeding, not using proper vehicle signals, not obeying traffic rules, and not frivolous. Officers should be held to the same standards as the public. Councilmember Colebrook said that these complaints, such as misconduct, should be dealt with by UPD with a progressive discipline process. I'm not sure why no one clarified this point, but the way the system is set up right now is that when a resident submits a complaint via the HRC, it is UPD who is supposed to investigate it and take appropriate action. However, what no one seems to realize is that the reason why the complaint snowballs and becomes resource-intensive is because this is not happening. UPD, for some reason, is hesitant to investigate the officers and cannot find any wrongdoing with the police officers. Sounds familiar? This results in the police chief issuing a finding letter that says that there's no misconduct, thus no discipline process. So this leads to dissatisfaction and leads to appeals and so on. So, and either that, or Chief Seraphin or Carol Mitten will mishandle the complaint, and then it results in more complaints and appeals. If the complaints were handled properly and there was actual meaningful action taken, there's no reason that the cost is what Carol Mitten came up with. So please don't blame this cost on the resident or the system. If the complaints and appeals are a real cost to the city, then this should be an impetus for the city to do better. There are consequences to police misconduct and mishandling of complaints. If police officers do something wrong, yes, there will be complaints. And as long as UPD leadership does not believe in accountability of the officers, there will be more misconduct and more complaints. It's really easy to lessen the complaints. Just don't come up with creative ways to stuff complaints. Hold your police officers accountable. If police officers know that there will be consequences, officer misconduct will lessen. The answer is not to stop receiving complaints. It's just ridiculous that the answer to the problem of complaints against police officer misconduct is to think of a way to not deal with the complaints instead of addressing the misconduct so it does not happen again.
Thank you. Next is John Kraft.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, I'll have one short statement or question on the item for purchasing certain real estate, 1411 North Lincoln Avenue. I noticed you said that you're buying it from Kaiser Burke Properties, Inc., and I'm curious if you follow Section 3.1 of the Public Officers Prohibited Activities Act, which requires the seller to identify every member, shareholder, limited partner, general partner, et cetera, by name in a sworn affidavit prior to entering into a contract. I want to FOIA that information, and I want to make sure that you obtain that information before you enter into this contract to purchase the property. Again, it's Section 3.1 of the Public Officers Prohibited Activities Act, and it's a requirement when you're talking about real estate prior to entering into a contract. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next is Evelyn B. Underwood.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Yes, I will forego my statement. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Underwood. Good to hear from you. Next is Drake Mater.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Drake Mater. I'm a student graduating senior at the U of I in the College of AHS Community Health. I am here again in support of the no AMRA shut offs, and I congratulate, and I just want to say thank you, Alan and Bo, for the work that you have done, and again, thank you, Diane, for stepping up and telling Pritzker about what needs to be done. Because we have all seen the powers that be, i.e. Pritzker in this instance, lie directly to the media and lie directly to us that he does not have the power. Just shows how important your job, everyone that is on council, to actively speak up for the people. We voted for you. We elected you, and you also be speaking up for us to those who are even above you because, again, the power of the people, ain't no power like the people. So thank you again, Diane, and thank you again, city council, for moving forward with the resolution regarding the utility shut offs. But I'm also here to just speak again regarding an issue that is a public health crisis along with the utility shut offs, and that is homelessness, and that is food insecurity. Food insecurity is connected, there are deep connections with domestic violence when it comes to food insecurity. Heat or the lack of heat, which includes utility shut offs, can play a major role in domestic violence as well. And within domestic violence, we know that there are certain circumstances where survivors or victims of domestic violence, usually women, primarily black and brown women and their children, can end up being homeless. So we already have a homeless population, which is a public health crisis in itself, but we may have more people end up being homeless because not just of the moratorium ending or the utility shut offs, but because of the food insecurity, because of the conditions of the world right now that can lead to higher rates of domestic violence, which can leave women and children vulnerable. We must work together to actively create a system that we can feed these people and house people. Now, again, I love court courage connection, and I love and understand that there's work regarding that, but more work needs to be done. I was looking at the agenda and noticed that you are thinking of purchasing property at 1411 North Lincoln. I'm wondering, and I would love to know exactly what you all were thinking about putting there. I hope that it would be something beneficial for the community and beneficial for people who really need it, maybe a homeless shelter that's 24/7, not just overnight, or maybe something else that can help benefit people. Again, I believe that if you all were to move forward with that purchase, there needs to be something that can help vulnerable populations. I think another thing that can be done, unfortunately, again, I believe public housing for everybody, but again, I know that that may not be something that you all maybe can actively do because if you probably could have, you would have done it already. But I understand that you all have removed benches because the university wanted you to, and so you all have removed benches, leaving homeless people to sleep on the ground, sleep in the cold. Even if you don't want to do public housing, there are certain things that we can do, putting heaters up at bus stops, so we can talk to the NTD regarding this, too. Again, I believe public housing, but again, we should be able to lower the risk. That is what this is about, lowering the risk of deaths that will be on the hands of the city of Urbana and Champaign and even the university if something is not done. So let's find out ways that we can lower the risk. We can lower the risk by having, implementing heaters at these bus stops, ensuring that we can have cold drives for people at these bus stops or for the homeless people. There needs to be a way that we can actively feed these people as well. I know my time is coming to an end, and I have so much that can be said, but thank you again for having this, for allowing me to speak, and again, thank you for the resolution regarding utility shut offs. You all have a good one.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak tonight? I'll just remind folks that you're welcome to send additional comments, whether you spoke or not, to email, citycouncil@urbanaillinois.us. Okay, move on to the next item on the agenda, which is staff report. Staff report today. Which is staff report. Is there a staff report today?
I do have. Yeah, I do have a few things. Thank you. First of all, I wanted to introduce you all to our new interim Public Works Director. It's Tim Cowan. And if Jason can bring him into the panel, he'll have a chance to speak. Tim comes to us, he's actually a resident of Urbana, which is great. He's a licensed engineer, holds licenses in Illinois, Indiana, and Michigan. He's a graduate of, he has a degree in civil engineering from Southern Illinois University. He's worked with the Farnsworth Group, City of Danville, his own company, C Two Engineers LLC, and most recently with Donna Human Associates. So he comes with a lot of municipal experience and project management. So I just wanted to give you an opportunity to meet him, and Tim, you can say a few words.
Hi, everybody. Tim Cowan here. I appreciate the opportunity you guys have given me here to step into this role. I'm real excited about a lot of the things you guys do have going on here. You know, a lot of the, some of the big planning items you guys have kind of tackled already. And, you know, I hope to really help build on that and, you know, help do what I can to improve operations and really, you know, dedicate some of my skills to the city and the residents there to try to just continue to offer them the high-quality service they should expect.
Thanks, Tim.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And I forgot to mention, Tim is a new father as of about five weeks ago.
Yeah, yep.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations to you.
Figuring a lot of things out right now.
Not getting much sleep, but he's still excited about everything.
Who needs sleep?
Right.
It's overrated.
And I have a few more things. One, I wanted to follow up on the utility discussion. I did send a memo to council members earlier today with answers to some of the questions that were raised last week. So I'll just add to that. One of the things the council had asked about last week was whether the city could be notified of disconnections or notices of disconnections. We just learned late this afternoon that the Public Health District actually gets notices of disconnections. And Daniel Chin with shared that information with me just before I left the office today. We're following up, though, on the list of addresses that were provided to determine whether or not those were actually going to be shut off scheduled or whether they were notices of disconnections and what that actually meant. Based on my correspondence with Amherst this week, the notices are sent, and then most of the time customers are then, people follow up and customers work out either getting assistance and payment plans, or they get liheep. And so those notices don't all translate into disconnections, which is good to know. One thing it's important, though, is that customers, whether it's Amherst or the Water Company, customers do have to call the utilities if they're experiencing hardship. We learned that from the Citizens Utility Board. And Amherst also is maintaining a moratorium on service disconnections for customers who have adverse health conditions. That could include COVID, it can include other things, who are eligible for liheep. So that means they qualify as a low-income, look for low-income assistance. Or if they're experiencing hardship caused by COVID-19. And that wasn't really defined, so I think that's a pretty broad category. But people who get notices of disconnection have to call the utilities to notify them if they meet one or more of those conditions. I spoke with the Regional Planning Commission again this week. They do have money available for liheep. It does take paperwork. It is, you know, there are some administrative steps you have to go through. So people, a lot of times, do need help working through this. RPC will take appointments online. They also accept walk-in clients every Thursday at Brookton Center. There's two pots of money available through liheep. One is assistance in paying utility bills if you're, for your current residence. And there's also a pot of money available that will help you with the cost of reconnecting if you move to a new residence. And that money is available once a year. And I also spoke or heard from the Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District. They're not regulated by the ICC, so it's not a utility like Amherst or the Water Company. But the UCSD Board has directed staff to not request disconnections, even if the customers have not notified them that they're impacted or can't pay. And the UCSD has started using payment plans, and they're also working with Regional Planning Commission to start up a version of liheep to help people pay super bills. Now, a lot of times that USCD bill, oftentimes, at least based on my experience as a landlord, that's not something that tenants are responsible for paying directly. But if they are, then they're working on setting up a way for people to get assistance in paying for that as well. So after, I've spent a fair amount of time on the phone and in contact with various folks this week, and it seems to me that the challenge is still is making sure people know what resources are available. And people who live outside, you know, city limits are included in the numbers for disconnections, but they're technically not within the city, but they're still in one of our zip codes, six-one-eight-zero-two. So we need to make sure people have phone numbers to call, that they know that there is assistance available, and that there are people available to help them work through the paperwork needed. And I believe, starting December first through March thirty-first, there's a statewide moratorium on disconnections or shut offs. So we've got to get through November. I did, was able to hand-deliver the copy of the resolution you passed last week. On Tuesday morning, the governor held a last-minute press conference in Champaign. So we were able to give copy of the resolution to his staff who got it to the governor. So that was actually good timing, good timing all around. So we'll continue to focus on this issue, and I'm going to be getting information from Amherst on the disconnection notices that were sent this week. And I'll let you know what I hear about that. Let's see. The next announcement is, I am very sorry to announce that Ms. Julie Laut is, has submitted her resignation from the City Council due to health reasons. Although she was on the council for a short period of time, she had an impact. She brought a lot of enthusiasm to the council. She, we are following through on her leadership with regard to joining the Government Alliance on Racial Equity. And we will follow up as well on her advocacy for getting youth involved. So I will open up this seat for applications. We'll follow the same process that we have the previous three times. The application and information is available on the city's homepage. We'll take applications until Monday, November thirtieth, and I hope to have someone very soon after that to bring it to City Council. So we wish Julie the best and thank her for her service. And also wanted to let you know that I've extended a couple of the emergency orders. The one related to the suspension of special event permit issuance, as well as emergency order twenty oh nine, which focuses on the numbers of attendees at private parties and residential settings, use of masks, and social distancing. And those will, those will be, instead of an effective date, I just, we are making that effective indefinitely. With the numbers, COVID numbers going up, we're currently in tier-one mitigation. Our region is still heading up instead of heading down. And until we have a clearer idea of where we're, what we're facing, those emergency orders will remain in effect, and I will bring those to City Council next Monday for affirmation. And I think that's, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions for Mayor Marlin? I had one, just clarification on the Amherst shut off issue. So that the number for Amherst is one eight-hundred-seven-five-five-five-thousand, one eight-hundred-seven-five-five-five-thousand. I think that's the daytime one. But that's to call the utility and tell them that they're experiencing hardship. So if they do that, do they still have to qualify for liheep? Do you know?
Yeah, they'll then get, depending on what their specific situation is, I understand it, then they will then be directed. Either they'll discuss the various assistance through Amherst, but also it's likely that they'll be directed to liheep as well.
Okay.
So if you're, you know, if you're contacted by someone, and this is just me talking, but if you're contacted by someone who's experiencing hardship, you got, I think you need to do both. You need to call Amherst, but then go ahead and, you know, call the RPC or go to the RPC and start looking for liheep.
Okay, thanks. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to agenda item number six. Resolution number twenty twenty-dash-eleven-dash-zero-five-five-R. Resolution authorizing acceptance of an Illinois Arts Council Agency grant for Urbana Arts and Culture Program operating support. Rachel Storm, I think I saw, joined us. Hi, Rachel.
I'm here. Thank you all. Good evening, everyone. I'm here with, I guess, a bit of good news. The Urbana Arts and Culture Program was recently awarded a grant by the Illinois Arts Council to support general operations of our arts program in the fiscal year of 2021. This funding is awarded to exceptional arts organizations and those with significant arts programming. We received the grant in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred dollars in unrestricted program support. The Urbana Arts and Culture Program has been a recipient of this grant for a number of years and consistently the last few years. It supports all of our ongoing programs, but also in a time of COVID-19, it's important to note that our program has worked pretty diligently to adapt our programs, to create virtual programs where possible, to create adaptive programs that allow people to experience or encounterable art in the community. And we have a large number of things that have continued, as well as our launching of our new, latest youth poet laureate and our poet laureate programs of last year. Our staff has also worked with volunteers and interns to assist with promoting artist relief programs and cold-calling various creative economy organizations, businesses, and organizations to ensure that they have information about artist relief. So all of these kinds of efforts are going on in a time of COVID. This represents no increase in the general fund expenditures related to this grant. We, of course, present to you three options. Approve the resolution, approve the resolution with changes, or do not approve the resolution. And our staff recommend the City Council approve the resolution authorizing acceptance of this Illinois Arts Council grant to the Urbana Arts and Culture Program.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Rachel? Mary Alice?
Hi, Rachel. Thank you. It's good to see you. We haven't seen you in a while.
I know. It's good to see you.
I know in the past that we've had interns that have been, some of this funding has been used for. So I was wondering if you had plans to continue that program into the next year?
So this funding has never directly supported our interns. We get a separate grant called the Summer Youth Employment Grant. So this is more for operations. However, it would make sense if we were working with interns or volunteers that had new and adaptive ideas for programming in this time of COVID-19 or different kinds of public art initiatives that we would work together on to use some of this funding to put towards. That would absolutely make sense and may happen. We continue as a program to really take on a lot of students here and there as interns and volunteers. So we've consistently used the other grant through the Illinois Arts Council for summer interns. Those are all high school students. We've participated in Care For You, which is a program of Illinois State University and the Regional Planning Commission, which is largely a work program for young people, but it also is quite a kind of college readiness and a job readiness program. It has unfortunately lost its funding this year. So that's something that we won't be able to continue for the time being. But we do also work with the university, and I have currently some interns and volunteers that have various programs that they're working with me on that this funding would support. And those students largely come from the Community Learning Lab at the University of Illinois.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Jared?
I have a question, but I'd like to make a motion on the resolution.
Please do.
I'd like to move resolution number twenty twenty-dash-eleven-dash-zero-five-five-R. A resolution authorizing acceptance of an Illinois Arts Council Agency grant for the Urbana Arts and Culture Program operating support, be since the full council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second that.
It's moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. I think she beat you to it, Therese. So, yeah, moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice to move resolution number twenty twenty-dash-eleven-dash-zero-five-five-R to City Council with recommendation for approval. So any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes, indeed.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. And I want to, you know, say thank you to our Illinois Arts Council, such a wonderful state agency that's been able to continue to make this possible. And thank you to all of you who support the arts in our local community. Have a good evening.
Thanks. Next is ordinance number twenty twenty-dash-eleven-dash-zero-five-eight. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate at fourteen eleven North Lincoln Avenue. Carol, you were gonna introduce that?
Yes, I'll do the presentation, and then Chuck is on the line, and as is Sheila, should you have any technical questions? And let me just, I'm going to pull up for a moment here the plat, just so that people at home, if they're not familiar with this site, is that showing on the screen for you all?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. So this is a, you might recall, let me drop back just a second. You might recall when we went through the findings of the facilities condition assessment that two of our fire stations, Fire Station Three, which is next to this particular site on North Lincoln Avenue, and I forget the number, but the one, the other fire station that's on Philo Road are both in relatively poor physical condition and need to be replaced. And there was, there was sometime, some years ago, the city took advantage of the fact that a parcel of land was available for sale next to the Philo Road Station and purchased it for the future station that would replace the station there. And we, through this purchase, seek to do the same thing at this location. So with that as the background, then I will just walk you through that that we don't, we haven't done a lot of planning here. This is to give us the flexibility to cite a fire station in the approximately same location as we have the existing fire station. And Chuck can speak to you about that in terms of, from a service perspective. But that will let us keep the existing fire station in service until the new station has been built. So the purchase price is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Two hundred, the appraisal that we got for the property was two hundred thousand dollars. We had asked for some flexibility in negotiating the price. And so two hundred thousand of this can be paid for out of CDBG money, because it's a city facility. And then the additional twenty thousand dollars is coming from the capital funds that are allocated for city facilities. So we did get a, an email, you all got an email with some questions, which I'd like to answer. And I'll say, as to Mr. Kraft's question, I don't know the answer to that question. If that's a requirement, we're following the same process as we've done in many other transactions. So if that is a requirement, I'm sure that's being taken care of. So Mr. Garrett had asked a number of questions, and so I'll just walk through those now. He asked why the purchase price is so much higher than the assessed value. And the assessed value is what he reported was sixty thousand dollars versus two hundred thousand dollars. The assessed value, he doesn't understand that it's a third of the fair market value as estimated by the assessor. So that's where that wide disparity- So that's where that that wide disparity comes from. He asked what other properties were considered as alternatives, and he said he assumes that the fire station does not have to be in this exact location, which is true. But for this purpose, we didn't include other alternatives, but I'm gonna ask Chuck to explain why we're confident that this station is in the right place.
Chief Lous, are you on?
I think he's called in on one of these phone lines. Are you on four two one, chief?
Yes, I am right now.
Okay, you can go ahead and speak.
Okay, so thank you, Mayor Council, for allowing me to be a part of this presentation tonight, Carol as well. So we did partner with the the International Association of Firefighters and leverage some free services that they have, and that that free services that we use from them is GIS service. So they came, they they did a a review of the stations that we currently have and and looked at those as far as response time, normal driving time within their area. And Station Two, Three, and Station Two and Three are in the appropriate area where they need to be for response. The only station that they said that that could move some would be Station One here at City Hall. If and when we intend to do something with that, we can look at that, review that a little bit. But Station Two and Three right now are are in the right location. Station Four at the University of Illinois is set. That is where it is. That's the newest station. And so the to answer your question, Station Two and Three are pretty close to right where they need to be.
Okay, thanks, Chuck. And there's a couple more questions from Mr. Garrett. What is the overall cost difference between purchasing and building new versus remodeling the existing structure? So in this, I can't answer that question with any specifics, but what I can say is we're fairly confident that we need to build a new building for the following reasons. One is the physical condition of the existing building is pretty bad. The second is that the, we'd like to go from a two base station to a three base station to give us more flexibility and and storage capacity. And another thing that I know is really important to to Chuck is, and it's becoming increasingly important to me, is that the station be configured as a drive-through station so that they can pull in and and drive through and pull out without having to back the apparatus up. It's a, it just, it makes, it makes everything easier. And it, anytime they have to back up these large apparatus apparatuses, it's, you know, it just is risky. And it and it stops traffic unnecessarily as well. So the last question was, if you build a new station next door, what will be done with the with the existing facility? Does the financial assessment of the building decision consider demolition or ongoing maintenance of the existing building? So the plan would be that the existing building would be demolished. And with that, I would, I I'm recommending approval of the ordinance to purchase the property at fourteen eleven North Lincoln Avenue. And happy to answer any questions. And as I said, Sheila is available too, if you have questions about the the CDBG money.
Any questions for Carol? Therese?
I guess my question is basically, is the existing building in such bad shape that it couldn't be converted to something else that would be useful in the city of Urbana?
Well, I think if we, I, you know, given that we haven't done the design yet, I think that's a possibility, but I think we're going to need the land that it sits on. If we're going to have a drive-through facility, there's not, there's not that much land available overall. So unless we do something dramatically different, I think it, the, I think we'll just need to demolish it so that we can have enough room to do a drive-through. The site isn't that deep relative to Lincoln that that I I think we could afford to have that building continue to sit there.
So you're incorporating the the land that the existing building is on with the design of the new building that will be built?
Yes. I mean, if we find out once an architect is engaged that they that we don't need to, we can, we can deal with, you know, whether there's there's any reuse potential for the building. But, I mean, I've been through a few fire station designs in my career, and you need, you need a lot of land to move around the the big trucks.
I I know that station gets used a lot because I hear it. So I know it's used quite a bit. So that's why I was just asking if there's, if there was any other, if you're gonna incorporate that, where it is now, the building area, at least with, into the new design of what the fire, the new fire station would be, then I can understand, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Dennis, and then Bill?
Yeah, I've got two questions. What was the age of the fire department that we were, that we would be replacing? When was it built? Do you have an idea? Is it, is it a forty to fifty year old building or something like that?
I would guess, I don't, Chuck, maybe Chuck knows.
Yeah, that the the current building is almost fifty years old. So it is one of the older stations that we have. So it's, we try to look at these buildings to last fifty years or better, and hopefully better. So this one has definitely lived out its life, but being almost, probably a little bit over fifty years old right now.
I know, I've actually stopped at the fire, at that station, I don't know, about a year and a half ago, talked to some of the the guys that were stationed there, and I saw that the facilities were cramped and rather inconvenient. And they're out of date, definitely, you know, considering current standards for housing and equipment and materials and even, you know, allowing room for the guys to exercise and things like that. So I understand it's a, it's a building that needs reconsideration for use for certainly, or like rebuilding. I'm not against that. The lot shares one access drive with the gas station that's to the north. It was, is that gonna become something that becomes a, an issue for access and entrance into the station? Is that drive going to be reconfigured? So it's separated from the gas station approach off of North Vine Street? What do you have to say about that? I know we don't have a plan yet, a footprint.
Right.
But it, you know, looks like it's something that would be a concern to work with the neighbors to the north.
Right. They have an easement over the property, and that was taken into account when the appraisal was done. But that's a conversation that we will have once, once we get some design under our belts and see how how problematic that that is. And certainly, we wouldn't want to have a conversation like that until we own the property, but you're right, it's a, it's a concern.
I'm imagining that the architect's smart enough to figure it out, but I just sort of wonder how that might be. You know, whether if we built, if we, if we fenced the property that the fire department was on, for some reason, that would become an issue that would have to be ironed out.
Yeah, if, given that they have an easement, we couldn't, we couldn't block their access without resolving that with them.
You're right. Okay, thank you.
Bill Colbrook?
Yeah, actually, Dennis just took my question concern as well. I had the same one about the driveway being on the proposed land that we are thinking about purchasing. So that's been answered. Thank you.
Any other questions? I had one similar to that. If it turns out that we don't need the northernmost part and want to sell it off, is there a percentage of the purchase price that we would then refund to CDBG? Would we kind of prorate that or something? If we end up not using it all for for the purpose for fire, for a fire station?
I'm gonna let Sheila answer that question, if she, if she can.
Hi, this is Sheila Dodd. Yes, if we end up selling it at a future date, the CDBG funds would have to be returned to our line of credit.
Okay. Mary Alice?
Chief, I always wondered if you had an estimate on the approximate number of either households or residents that that north station serves?
I don't have the a number that it serves. I can get that for you and email that back to you.
Okay, but it, the the general boundaries, if you were to draw just kind of a general boundary in terms of what neighborhood that serves, could you give me a rough estimate? Does it go down to like university and then go to the northern boundary? You know what I mean? Like the cross?
Yes, that is the the primary response for that station would be down to university and then the northern quadrant there of the city, although it does back up the rest of the city on any full alarms that we have.
Okay.
I know it basically serves my ward, and also there, I've, I've seen them respond to fires that are my Ward Three adjacent, such as when Mount Olive Baptist Church was caught on fire, that it was that, I believe it was that fire station that was there in the early morning hours responding also to that, to that fire. Am I correct, Chief Lous?
Yeah, we had Station, Station Three and Station One that responded to Mount Olive with champagne fire on that one.
And like, like you said, I've, I've seen them wherever they're needed on the the north side of town. I've seen plenty of, I've seen their fire, their fire trucks there. So it covers pretty much my ward and probably some even further east. I'm not, I'm not quite sure about that. I've just know, I just know what I've observed.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion? Mary Alice?
I'll make the motion. I move that we send ordinance number twenty twenty eleven zero five eight. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate at fourteen eleven North Lincoln Avenue to city council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Just by her hair, Mary Alice, motion by Mary Alice, seconded by Bill Colbrook to send ordinance number twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero five eight to city council with a recommendation for approval. Is there any discussion? Okay, if not, could the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, and thank you, chief. Next is ordinance number twenty twenty dash eleven dash zero five nine. An ordinance amending city code chapter three, increase the number of allowable video gaming terminal permits. Elizabeth Hannans here?
Yes, so as you may recall, back in January twenty twenty, the state law was changed to allow video gaming parlors to have six terminals rather than the previous five. At that time, the city did not elect to change its own ordinance, so in the city of Urbana, the cap is still five terminals. We had a request several months ago from a group of local business owners who asked that the city council consider permitting the six gaming terminal in local establishments. And I think as one of, one of the people we heard from in public comment mentioned a couple of reasons that they requested that were, one, to increase revenue to offset the new increased minimum wage. And also, they've had substantial losses due to the pandemic. In some cases, both in terms of the related business, but also because gaming operations were shut down for an extended period. So we received a request from sixteen business owners. And those included the owners of Emma's Hot Spot, Bunny's, BFW Post Six Thirty, Lucky's Lounge, Flamingo Slots, The Silver Bullet, Toro Loco, Ruby's, Dottie's, Bangkok Thai Restaurant, Lucky Luke's, Lindy Lou's Place, Blackbird, Boomerang's Bar and Grill, and American Legion Post Seventy One. So that was actually quite, quite a long list, the majority of our businesses that offer gaming. And so we've brought this ordinance to allow you to determine whether you, whether you want to make good on that request.
Okay, thank you. I also should mention that city council received a couple of letters today, maybe yesterday, but because they were both today, from one from Mike Deason and one from Keith Rentschler, Rentschler, also in support of this ordinance. Are there any questions for Elizabeth? Yes, I, I, okay, go ahead, Mary Alice.
I had a question. It might not be anything that can be answered right now, but I'm thinking some of the businesses that you said, Elizabeth, were restaurants and bars in addition to some of the gaming establishments. I know that we have rules with COVID in terms of the distance, in terms of people sitting. Do those, do those also apply to gaming terminals?
So, so of course, restaurants don't have any dine-in, but my understanding is that for gaming parlors, they're operating at reduced capacity right now. I am also gonna point out that I think we're all hopeful that that we will move beyond those mitigations at some point here before too long, and then kind of get back to something closer to business as usual.
So, I mean, I know that as of today, we don't have indoor dining or we're in the bars, but when we are under region, or sorry, Phase Four, where we had reduced capacity, how did that impact the, do you know how it impacted the gaming establishment?
I I do not know. I saw the mayor raising her hand, so maybe she does.
I I can't answer that particular question. I did want to go back to your first question, though, Mary Alice. The, the, on the call on, I'm forgetting what day, Friday, lost track of time. On the call on Friday with the governor's office and the public health, Department of Public Health, video gaming will still occur, but there will be no eating or drinking at the terminals. So, so they could still do video gaming even in Tier One mitigation, but no eating or drinking.
Okay, but we, do they have to be a certain distance apart?
Yeah, yeah, they're, the distancing applies as well. And people will be masked, have to be masked at the terminals.
Therese?
That's basically what I was gonna ask. All of the other regulations or protections are still in place. Also, if, is it that the the gaming establishment itself, because I've, I've gone to a couple of them. Is it that they, they're not giving out food, like the places I've gone to in the past have just been like chips and soda? So they're not giving anything out, or so does that? This is the other thing I want to know, because I know people are imaginative with certain things. Would that apply to people bringing their own in?
Amy Gardner is still on, and she has her hand up, so I think she might be able to provide some clarity on that.
Okay.
Hello, can you guys hear me? Yeah, so I can answer some of those questions. So yeah, per regulations, we do either have either or or both machines are distant six feet and dividers. And with the new mitigations, we do have to meet the same criteria as And with the new mitigations, we do have to meet the same criteria as restaurants. So currently, we are not serving any food or beverage. We can still serve it to go. We don't serve alcohol to go, but so for example, if a guest says, I want a burger, we can serve it to them when they leave, but not in the establishment. We do not allow them to bring food into the establishment. None of our snacks, same with snacks, if they wanted them, we would, you know, in a portion cup can take it to go. Everyone absolutely has to have masks on at the machine, anywhere in the building. I believe, was there another question that I missed?
Can people bring their own food in?
No, definitely not. No food, no drink. We have to meet all, all of the same criteria. Oh, and capacity, that was the other thing. We are also at 25% capacity, same as the restaurants.
Emery, how do I say your name? Emery?
Emery.
Emery. The other question that just kind of occurred to me, are you guys supplying like sanitizing lotion and stuff like that?
Yeah, since, since the very beginning, we, as soon as people, and we've been doing this from the, from the jump, if people walk in and they don't have a mask, we ask if they do, we provide a mask. We have hand sanitizers around. We sanitize machines and everything as soon as people get out, but we have Clorox wipes if a guest wants them. I mean, just everything, very, very thorough cleaning.
Okay.
If, just to follow up on the capacity, if you're at 25% capacity, can there still be five people sitting at the five gaming terminals?
We are lucky in that all of our capacities, I think the lowest, like one location, I think brought us to nine or something. So with our employee, yeah, we can still achieve our, the capacity we need, but it, it definitely hurt at some areas. Yeah, so we have to keep a close watch on it.
Okay, thanks. Mary Alice, did you still have a question?
That answer was my question, but it spurred another question. Um, I think perhaps were you the person who was here last time, during public input about a couple of months ago, Emery?
Probably, I've been there a couple of times, yes.
All right, and I, my question at the time was, how often are all five terminals basically being used? So what is like the demand of having the six terminal there?
Well, it fluctuates. There's definitely peak hours, you know, like during midday, lunchtime, they're more full, you know, for some reason, afternoon between like two and five, they're more full, evenings, probably similar to most restaurants, you know? We have peak times, and then there's different times of the day where they're not as busy. So there's definitely, definitely times that a sixth machine absolutely would be very beneficial, but it's, they're not all full all day long, like we would love it if they were, but you know, they're not, but definitely, and it's not even just about them all being full, but to have that extra variety. People enjoy having a game mix in there, so to have an opportunity to provide another option. But yes, there's definitely times that they're full and we have to turn people away. So it would be, it would, it would be great to have another one in there, for sure.
Any other questions for Elizabeth or Emery? I have one, Elizabeth, I think. In the, in the memo, it said that there, actually, I think it was in the letter and the memos, so the estimate was there'd be another 20% revenue, $70,000 for the city. So that means we're already getting $350,000. That means that that's 5% of the total loss. That's about $7 million a year that people lost last year in Urbana. And I guess it was supposed to make us more likely to vote for it, but the way I see that is it's another 1.4 million that people in Urbana are going to lose. So I don't know if it makes me more likely to vote for it or less likely to vote for it, but if that's true, I mean, I did look at like September numbers, and it looked like they're already up about 20, 25% because of the more liberal gambling limits. Instead of $2, it's a $4 limit now, instead of a cap on winning 500, now you can win 1,200 or 1,199, I think. And they also have a progressive machine and progressive thing where it can, you can actually win a big jackpot. They're very low odds, up to $10,000, I think. I don't know if anybody's ever won that locally. But it seems like those things are probably contributing a lot to the increase year over year. I know the year-to-date is way down because they had to close so much for several months. It's way down year-to-date, and I understand that, but as far as going forward, that 20% extra, is that something over and above what we've seen the last few months where it's already 25% higher than last year?
Yeah, it's, it's been about a month since I looked at this, so I'm going to do my best to recall, but yeah, they, so actually, in the, in the, in the request, their, their estimate, I went back and verified that to the best of my ability, and I thought that those were good numbers, but yes, that would be over and above what we were expecting already. So there's two parts to that. There's the license, the terminal fee that they pay for each terminal, and then there's the additional gaming revenue to the city.
Okay. Thanks, any other questions? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll do the motion, so we can have a discussion. So I'd like to move then ordinance number 2020-11-059, an ordinance amending the City Code, Chapter Three, increasing the number of available, allowable video gaming terminal permits to the City Council with recommendation of approval.
And they're seconded by Sharice, was it?
It was.
Yes, she got it this time. So it's been moved by Dennis and seconded by Sharice to move ordinance number 2020-11-059 to City Council with recommendation for approval. Is there any discussion? Dennis?
Yeah, so we have had a hesitancy to encourage gambling in this community. This topic has come up before us before, and it didn't get support. I think, I think I'm in a, in a frame of mind that realizes that people are going to not become yet more degraded or, or significantly harmed, I suppose, by having an option of yet another game, gaming device, you know, in these establishments. I mean, if you're going to walk in to spend money, you're going to already have five choices to do it. If there's going to be another choice available, is it really going to make that much of a difference? These are like personal, personal decisions as far as, you could call it either monetary, financial for the family, or say ethical or moral, or whatever you want to say, but the city really doesn't, doesn't regulate morals of the community, you know, unless it endangers other individuals or becomes a public hazard in some manner. So my greater concern, I think, would be allowing us to establish yet more terminals through the community. And I know that there's a property in my ward that is probably going to come forward to the City Council pretty soon to ask for establishing a new gaming, a gaming parlor in an area which is very sensitive in my ward. I'm more likely to want to avoid that, although I'm not going to say that it's, it would be necessarily a, I don't know if I would, I would, might personally would like to vote up or down on that. I'm willing certainly to have the conversation, but as far as bringing an extra terminal in, there are some, some, I get, you know, this is sort of a decision for the long range. Yes, we're going to have the COVID issue here now, and it does affect people's ability to survive economically. Certainly, I would think about in favor more of some institutions in the community and wanting them to survive than others, but that's not, that's an icy dicey situation to start pairing out preferences when there's a, you know, when this is a available, available legal entity, operation, you know, established by the state. So, you know, I'm not excited about it. I probably will say okay, and I'd like to hear all the comments from the other people in council.
Any other comments, discussion? Sharice?
I'll just say the, basically the same thing to Dennis, because he, I know that I was, I have voted against new gaming places based on the fact that it, we, there are so many in my ward. And at the same time, I also know that and recognize that one cannot legislate morality, so to speak, and that's not, that is not, my duty is serving everybody, you know, that I should, that I should be trying to serve in, in the city of Urbana. And people that go in there, I can't make, it's not my job to make their choices for them, their choices that they're going to make. So all I can say is that I do know that the people that own these establishments are business people, and that they're suffering just as well under this pandemic, and that we had discussed actually giving them, doing this back in the, it was sometime last year. I know I had brought it up because I had just, I had talked with one of the, one of the business owners in my ward about it. So I, I don't have a problem voting for this, and, and, you know, there are hard truths that, that we all have to face regarding this particular subject. So that's all I want to say.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Mary Alice?
I appreciate Sharice and Dennis's input. You know, I, I'm not a huge fan of pulling money out of the local economy, so Bill's amount there is quick math, I think was a little over $1 million of pulling it out of people's money. I agree that we shouldn't be legislating morals, financial morals, but I also, I can't support putting in more terminals. I'm going to abstain from this vote just because I don't think it's a good idea, but I'm also understanding that it is, that is the law. We are, you know, the state of Illinois decided that this was a legal thing, that we would have video terminals in the state, and so I'm not going to stand in the way of that, but just on a personal level, I can't vote for something that I know is going to be depleting the funds of families right now.
Bill Culber?
Really haven't given this much consideration until this came to council. I mean, obviously, I see the, the businesses that have the, the gaming terminals around town. I drive by them, and I don't even really give them, you know, much thought at all. I do appreciate the comments from the other council members, you know, when, when I go into a restaurant or some establishment and they've got video gaming terminals, I don't even give them even half a look, you know, that's not what I'm there for. You know, a lot of what I believe in is, you know, personal control, personal choices, and, you know, I'm not an addiction expert, but I do understand that that is an issue for some people, you know, but for me and, and, you know, for probably most people, that whether there's, you know, four terminals, five terminals, or six terminals is probably to, you know, isn't, you know, that big of a, of a difference. So I would tend to, to support this just for those reasons.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Go back to Sharice.
Oh, well, I was just listening to what Bill was saying, and my understanding too is that there's all, there's all types of, of information regarding like Gamblers Anonymous, and if you have issues with this, you know, these are the resources that you can go to. I think that was something that, that we voted on not too long ago, that, that there'd be some, there are notices and notifications or whatever of, so that if somebody does have that kind of, that kind of issue, that they can feel free to take advantage of those resources, and they're advertised in those establishments, as far as I know.
Okay, thanks. Dennis, could you take the chair for just a minute so I can comment?
Certainly, yeah, and I call on Bill Brown.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I mean, since I'm chair tonight and it's a committee meeting, I actually don't have to vote on this unless it's a tie, so I mean, I have it out that way. I'm not sure how I'll vote next week. I think the 20% extra just from having an extra terminal is probably a high estimate. I think they may be comparing it to other, or other outfits that already have been operating this year with the new rules, and I think the new rules have a much greater influence over increased gambling than the next or terminal would. So for that reason, I may actually end up supporting it. I haven't really supported much in the way of gambling since I've been on council. I think it is kind of exploitative of people to, for government participation in, in gambling. But that said, the current state law and state practice does provide a little bit more for addiction and assessment, that we don't really have any place locally other than Gamblers Anonymous, from what I understand. The state in general hasn't done a very good job of it. They've provided less than a million dollars a year out of the billions they take in in gambling, less than a million for, for assessing and treating gambling addiction with the new budget. I think that's up to four million, some, something in that range, four, four to six million. So it's a slight improvement. Yeah, so I just wanted to, just wanted to bring that up. I, I don't know how I'll vote on it next week, if it gets there. Thanks, Dennis.
Okay, surrender the chair. I guess I, because, because of the tone of the conversation, I would like to perhaps change my recommendation to forwarding it to City Council with no recommendation.
Is that okay with the second of the motion, Sharice? Okay, so now it's been moved and seconded to forward ordinance number 2020-11-059 to City Council with no recommendation. Any further discussion? Dennis?
So I think this would allow us to hear from our constituents in our different wards to maybe get further advice or comment from the community about their concerns about this, because maybe many of them haven't been apprised that this is going to be a topic of consideration tonight, yet. So I'd like to hear then from people in the ward to get direction.
Okay, thanks. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Jane.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
I guess I'm staying with the voice vote, I could just be quiet, so I guess I have to say I'm staying now.
Mr. Roberts?
I'll say okay, yes.
Mr. Culbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Next is discussion of CPRB ordinance amendment, and I don't think we had any information on this.
You are correct. So I, I wanted this to be responsive to the direction that you gave at the last council meeting, but I also wanted to get some further direction on a couple of specifics. But before I do that, I would like to just give you a little update on something that happened at the CPRB meeting last week, and it relates to a request that you might remember from late September. CPRB member Katrina Kendall came and, and requested that the council That the council modify the CPRB ordinance to allow people who viewed a video to make a complaint. And that that would, that, that would be considered to be a firsthand account. And then there was a, a series of questions that the council members asked. And, and then I got some additional follow-up questions after the meeting and I forwarded all of that to the CPRB. And they took that, they took all that up at their meeting last Wednesday. And after some discussion, which I will not characterize to you, you, you can watch it if you, if you like. They decided to make their own interpretation. That, that they would accept someone who had viewed a video. And they would accept that as a, as a firsthand account. And, and then, and I think the belief was that if the council didn't want them to do that, you would say so. So following that meeting, I, I had a conversation with the police department, some folks in the police department, and then I also had a conversation with. Our, one of our attorneys and about that and, and I have a, I have a memo from. Our outside counsel who's, who's assisting us with some collective bargaining matters. And I will forward it to you tomorrow and as well as the members of the CPRB. And what he focused on were two things that, that, that relate to, to, to this. Language and one has to do with the language of the CPRB ordinance and what is the meaning of a, of firsthand account. And of course, you know, it, it's your prerogative to, to change the ordinance if you so choose. But he also focused on the language of the collective bargaining agreement. And it's his opinion that, and, and the language of the collective bargaining agreement is slightly different than the CPRB ordinance. And. It says that. What's required by the collective bargaining agreement with the FOP for CPRB complaints is, and this is a quote. Complaints against an officer must be signed and sworn by a person with personal knowledge of the incident. And so his, it is his legal opinion that in order to accept video. Someone with a video account that had not been physically present, that we would have to actually change the collective bargaining agreement with the FOP. So I just wanted to. Communicate that to you and I will be following up, as I said, tomorrow, sending you the memo that he provided, which is. Available to the public as well and, and I'll send that to the CPRB members also. So now to the, there were a few issues that would help me immensely if I could get some clarification from you all or some guidance as we. As we draft actual ordinance language to bring back to you on this idea of tiering complaints. So I'm going to share my screen. I, I just have a couple of slides to, to show you tonight. Okay, so let me see, I think I skipped. Okay, so the, this is basically, the first two slides. Speak to process about who does the classification. And these are, this is two flow charts and they're really quite similar. I, I just did it for the sake of having a, a visual that might make it easier. So in the first, in the first. Option, it would be the HRO who, who classifies the complaint. So there's going to be a tier A, as I, as I envision it, there'd be a tier A, which would be the serious complaints. And then tier B would be the less serious complaints. And I'm going to offer you some language in a minute that I think captures it and asks for some guidance from you there as well. So if the HRO reviews the complaints and classifies them, then. According to the ordinance, they would then be forwarded for the internal police process in seven days or less. So for a tier A complaint, which is the, currently everything follows this process. The, the CPRB process would begin, which is that. A, the, the complaint is referred to the police for investigation. And then the investigation takes place and is there any necessary actions are taken, there is a. Disposition by the chief of police that's communicated to the complainant and then that person has the option to appeal to the CPRB. That the tier B complaints, if we create this, this tiering. Structure, then an internal review process would take place immediately as well. And there'd be an investigation, any necessary actions would be taken. What I would suggest is that metrics get collected and then reported biannually so that the complaints don't. People would see them in the aggregate and, and information would be collected. And if there were patterns of behavior by a particular officer and so forth. That could be teased out of it, but it wouldn't be that the, you know, all the complaints themselves would go there. The alternative then is that the CPRB reviews the complaint and classifies it as a tier A or tier B. Now, the, the issue here is that CPRB is currently meeting once a month. They're, they're, they're trying, I mean, we've only been at it for a few months since that was put in place. And. I, what I, so it's, you know, plus or minus 30 days to really get it started because you, depending on when the complaint comes in relative to when the next CPRB meeting is. That would be, you know, that, that just affects the timing of when things can get started because you have to wait for the CPRB to, to put eyes on it and then make a pronouncement. So that's the only difference is the, is the, is the amount of time. But the other, the other point of this is that it's also adding to the workload of CPRB if they do the classification process. I know there, there was, I, I saw at least one. One person had written in and suggested that CPRB needs to be the, the entity that does that. I'm asking for direction from you all. Given workload and timing, what's, what's your preference and then we'll draft the ordinance accordingly. So that's, that's the first thing. And then maybe I'll just skip to the last thing, which is. This is what I'm proposing as tier A categories of misconduct. These are things that are of a more serious nature. And this, this is drawn from the two, the two examples that I gave you. Chicago and Washington DC and I'm happy to, you know, to, I, I, what I'd like to hear is any other. Any other behaviors that you think belong in a tier A category and so that of the more serious. Nature. So that's what I'm looking for, direction on process and direction on defining tier A.
Okay, sorry, I was trying to unmute. Any questions for Carol? Mary Alice?
Thank you, Carol. I always work better with visuals, so thanks for, for outlining that. I, so, so my first one, which is actually your second question, which is what, what should be categorized in tier, in the top tier, I. It would, I would feel better if I did a little more research and thinking about that before, like actually giving you some suggestions off the top of my head. I'd like to take, to think about that. The second piece is I, I do like the suggestion of having CPRB be the people who kind of move things between tier A and tier B. Has this been brought up to CPRB? Have they talked about what that would entail in terms of their workload?
I think. There was some conversation about it. Ricardo had asked me to run through the slides that I presented to you all. One of the things that I think is great about the members is they want to do the work. I, I worry about their availability because I have also been scheduling them, so I think they are open to doing the work. I just worry about their capacity.
Okay, if, if that is the route that is taken, my suggestion would be. A schedule in which people have to have things in before it's included on the next meeting for review, some kind of timeline. Two weeks, three weeks, one week, whatever it may be, so that people have an opportunity to do that.
Okay. Sharice?
I think what I would like to see. From what I saw your. On your screen is a more definition of what defines each of those things with, with. With a tier A. Just more like, you know, like I looked at harassment, oh, what is, what is considered harassment? What is considered discriminatory language? What is considered? And, and an example or, or a couple of examples of those particular things so that it's not just a label saying this, that, and thus. And somebody, anybody CPRB or the person making the complaint would actually be able to make up their own definition. So.
Your point is well taken. We've already started working on that because, just for the reason that you, that you articulated, which is. If, if we don't define it more specifically, then people will define it for us. So, and we're trying to anchor it in policy. So, you know, what, what does the policy? I mean, we're not, we're not, you know, doing a. You know, extensive crosswalk, but we want to make sure that whatever's misconduct is something that is, that would be a violation of specific policy. Because that's, that's what's intended. So yeah, good point and we're working on that.
And. And I think it's just important also for that transparency thing that.
Yep.
People. That everyone kind of be on the same page so that when a complaint goes through, it's a consistent. Steps that will be taken. I'm done. Dennis had, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think it's been represented to us that the CPRB is. Is, is it two people understaffed right now? And facing quite a lot of work, work that would, you know, keep them busy for months ahead potentially. So yeah, I think your comments about capacity is well taken. So I've got two questions. Do you want guidance about whether the complaints that have already been filed but have not yet been addressed or heard? Can be reviewed under a triage system once we adopt it?
No, I wasn't intending to change, I mean, we're, my intention and, and I think as far as the CPRB is concerned is that we take that through the process that was in place. At the time those complaints were filed. I'm not asking anything about, this is moving forward. This is not looking backwards.
Okay, and then the second one is. I guess I have two, two more thoughts. What are the qualifications of the individuals who need to make these discernments? Are these going to be very. Straightforward discernments between types A or B? And if we have, do we have an individual in human, human resources that. Would be trained to make those kinds of discernments already? Or is this going to be a special, requires some kind of special aptitude or background? Of training? And is there somebody in CPR, CPRB who wants to take on that or meet those requirements, whatever they might be, to make those determinations?
Well, I think this goes back to what Sharice was saying about, about being clear about if we say harassment, what are we, what do we mean when we say harassment? What, what, what do, what does the policy say about that? So that it's clear to whoever, whether that's a CPRB member or the CPRB. Membership or whether that, I, I mean, I see it as being. In the future, the new human rights and equity officer. I don't think of it as special training, but I think of it as, as being very familiar with, with the ordinance that I hope will be pretty clear. About what's intended by these different categories. So I don't see it as special training.
Okay, and then the last thing I was going to ask you is, I appreciate looking at the slides. I didn't see these included in the packet available material. I mean, I didn't get a chance to like kind of look at.
Yeah, I apologize about that. They weren't done until today, so.
Okay, so we're all human and that's understandable.
Kind of get some stuff done.
So you know, what I like to see then is also slide number three or whatever, which shows also the same graphic way. How does the appeal process then work? Because there will be steps in that as well, which would be well to understand as far as the. Total complexity of handling a complaint, which then goes through appeals, which is again a further step of determination and separation. And so are you also going to offer us that?
Well. In coming to you with, with this request, it was really to say. I feel that there's a need to take this on as a, as a separate issue and not attempt at this point to completely rewrite the ordinance. Even though I, I think there's merit in rewriting the ordinance. But I, I wanted to be a little bit more surgical and just take on this issue of tiering complaints. So I, I don't intend to bring you. New language about how the appeals process goes at this time. But I think, I think we're learning what works and what doesn't, so. I think that would come in and maybe a next more comprehensive batch of amendments.
Yeah, do you, do you have a current working flow chart about appeals that you use now that you could share?
I'd have something.
I mean, is there, is there, is there a process that we've been using regularly that you could define for us sort of? Because I haven't really watched the process in, in action myself.
We've, we've only had, we've only had a couple of appeals up until, up until recently and. And we haven't been able to take it through its whole process, but I can certainly sketch out what the process is intended to be based on the ordinance as it exists.
Okay, great. That'd be really good information too. Okay, maybe I'd say, I might have another question, but a lot of the people have theirs now. Thank you.
Bill Colbrook?
Yeah, a couple of things, I guess, a couple of comments maybe. I guess my biggest concern too is capacity of the CPRB staff to handle, you know, this as well. I know that the intent of at least some of the members of the CPRB that is to take this on is their responsibility. But with their meeting schedule and all the other things that, that they are tasked with. I'm just concerned if, that if they took on this responsibility in a more formalized fashion, that they really would not be able to, to meet the demand. Of the complaints that are coming in. You know, the, the, we hear from the public routinely that they are upset with the process. On one hand, I think they'd be upset. With the process if the CPRB took on this responsibility and there was a delayed reaction. On the other hand, if it went to the police department and the process was a little speedier, I think we would, we would also hear complaints from the public. That the police department would be the ones to do the input process. So I think we're in a, in a situation where regardless of which direction we guide the CPRB to do this, that it's, it's, somebody's going to view it as, as the wrong way. And the other issue I've got. Was the comment that you made about how the CPRB is considering taking video evidence. You know, and I've mentioned this before and I just want to mention it again, and not only do we have concerns of whatever evidence we take as far as. A complaint needs to abide by the collective bargaining agreement, but I just wanted to also mention state law again. And that is the Uniformed Peace Officers Disciplinary Act. It says anyone filing a complaint against a sworn peace officer must have the complaint supported by a sworn affidavit. Any complaint having been supported by a sworn affidavit and having been found in total or in part to contain knowingly false material information. Shall be presented to the. shall be presented to the appropriate state's attorney for determination of prosecution. Once again, this is state law, it's only state law. I, I know that, uh, some people have mentioned that Chicago Police Department takes video evidence. Uh, Chicago's in Illinois too. I, I don't know quite how, uh, Chicago Police Department has, uh, allowed for video evidence when they're under the same state laws as us, so I'd like that to be, uh, looked into as well. That if the CPRB does take video evidence, how do they get around and how they abide by, uh, Illinois law?
Anyone else? Jared?
Yeah, um, and the, uh, the gentleman who had brought up the, uh, question of the flow process for, uh, the, the complaints was Daryl Cruz, um, who's been extremely, uh, helpful and useful to us and, uh, figuring out a lot of our, our processes and many things. And I'm certainly, uh, supportive of his opinion that, uh, you know, outside of, you know, a full rewrite of, uh, the CPRB, uh, ordinance, which I think, uh, does need to be done, um, that, that those, uh, that they be the ones who determine, uh, which ones they're going to see and which ones they're not, and that, that does not, uh, flow through, uh, another channel, uh, other than that. I think that his, his points are, are very, very valid and, uh, I, I definitely support, support those. Um, I certainly have a number of, uh, things that I think would fall into those categories, um, as far as, uh, the tiers. But I think if we're gonna look at that, we also need to be, um, clear about what's in the other categories too. Like if we're gonna say what, what all stuff falls into tier A, we should also say what, what all is not falling into tier A, what would fall into tier B. When people are making complaints, I mean, the whole, the whole thing is, uh, needs, needs substantial assistance in what's currently available in our, in our ordinance. Uh, so I think there's a lot of work still to be, to be done, uh, in that. Um, and I can send, I'll, I'll send those on Carol for other ones, but I think we need to see them, uh, in both of those. Um, in, you know, to Bill's point of, you know, when we're thinking about the, uh, amount of work that the volunteers on CPRB have to, uh, have to do, I will again bring up my, uh, continued points that, you know, we as a city have to make choices about the things that we want to invest in. And, you know, if you look at what I would, what I would call progressive police departments across the country, almost all of them have a, something along the lines of, uh, a Department of Police Accountability within their city, uh, that deals specifically with, uh, these types of things. Now, I'm not suggesting that that's exactly the right thing, you know, for us, or saying that we need to create a new, uh, department within the city for that. I don't know that that is the process that I would support, but the point is, is that, uh, those cities are making, uh, financial investments in staff, uh, who are dedicated to this. And we are relying completely on unpaid volunteers, uh, to do something that I really feel like is, you know, in our, uh, in our wheelhouse of things that we should be considering investing in ourselves. So, you know, I also have concerns about, uh, the work that goes, that goes into that and this. And that's the big problem of, you know, the, the board in the first place is that we're putting all of this onus on unpaid volunteers, uh, to do this heavy lifting, uh, for folks. So, you know, when we think about rewriting CPR, CPRB, uh, ordinance or, you know, how we think about transparency and accountability going forward, uh, those are something that I would stress to think about is, you know, we, you know, we choose how to spend the money that we garner through our, our taxes and all those things on behalf of our constituents. And I think that, you know, that's something worth considering, putting an investment in. So, you know, those are my thoughts.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have a question on, um, as far as what's considered a complaint. I, I can imagine people, I think I may have even called before and talked to a sergeant, um, to ask about, you know, something that a police officer did or something. And if I phrased it like, you know, I didn't like what this police officer does, does that, there's a verbal complaint on a telephone? Does that initiate anything? Or do you actually have to fill out a complaint form?
You would fill out a complaint form. I, you know, I, I've, I've talked to, um, Deputy Chief Searls about this a couple of different times. And, you know, it's, it's not, there are, there are people that call, just like they call any department and they say, you know, I didn't like the way I was treated or I didn't like the way X, Y, Z went down. And so you talk to the person and hear them out and then, um, see if you can resolve it. If they choo, you know, if they choose to pick up the phone and, and pursue it that way. And then what they do in the police department is if the person is still not satisfied, they say, well, you know, if you like, you can fill out this complaint form. And it becomes more formalized, but they, you know, if people call, they talk to them and they don't, they don't automatically just go to the process.
Okay. I think, um, I mean, for me, the biennial report on the, uh, less, the tier B, I guess, that you're talking about seems a little, uh, I mean, I, I'd, I'd like to see CPRB be aware of, I think, all the complaints, um, although the level of review could be a lot less on, you know, the tier B complaints. I think even small complaints in aggregate. I mean, I know we talked about traffic, um, infractions and things like that as being pretty minor, but if it's, you know, if it did turn out to be, you know, that there was a blatant disregard by Urbana Police Officers of traffic laws, we'd want to know about it, uh, if there was a culture of that. And I don't know how else you would know if, if, um, you know, if it wasn't reported in a timely manner. So I think I would kind of favor something along the way Daryl, um, was recommending that most if not all complaints be, uh, at least have some level of review. Um, but I'm open to try to figure out what the most efficient way to do that would be so that we don't, you know, you don't start a formal process for every small complaint like that.
Well, I mean, right now, the, um, the CPRB members have access to all the complaints. And, um, this, rather than having, um, sort of a passive role with those, which, which means, you know, they can look at them if they want to. If they do the tearing, then they have to look at them in real, in more in real time. And so that would give them a heightened awareness of, of what, what kinds of complaints are coming in. And, um, so maybe that, that the patterns would be more aware, even in, in, in advance of a, of, uh, like a dashboard or something, um, that was, that was, um, provided periodically. They would, they would have just more of a sense. Um, but again, you know, that, that's, that's more work than that it, it, it puts a, you know, an active burden on them as opposed to a passive burden on them.
How many, how many people, how many staff members do we have working with CPRB right now?
Um, if you count me, we have three.
Okay, thanks.
Sharice?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, um, I forgot my question. Um, when, when CPRB, um, cause you said they all have access to the, all the complaints now?
Yes.
Okay, so are, uh, so they're already deciding what complaints, um, if it's a, if it's a tier A or a tier B, right?
No, there is no tearing.
Oh.
That, that, that's, that's the challenge that, that I feel is, um, needs to be addressed, which is if you write on a complaint form, if you, on a police complaint form, if you write something that is treated as a complaint that is taken through all of its processes and can be appealed. And, and my concern is that those are not all, um, of the same level. They don't all deserve the same level of attention. And that's what I'm trying to do is to, is to, is to create tiers so that it's not that they don't get attention and it's not that they're not addressed, but to be able to engage the CPRB appeal process, it should be a more serious matter.
Okay, so I guess my next question is that when, after it goes through the process, um, the complainant gets some kind of, 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 uh, correspondence or some, something to say that these are the, this is what our, uh, our decisions have been regarding your complaint? And then if you want to appeal it, then you take it to, is that how it works?
Yes. So, I mean, just in brief, the, um, the complaint is, is received. A letter goes out saying basically, we've received your complaint. Um, I, I think that letter says what number it's been assigned. And then, uh, there's a period of time that passes where an investigation is done. I'm giving you the thumbnail version of it. And then typically, the letter will come from the Chief of Police, um, saying what the disposition of that complaint has been, whether there was any finding of misconduct, whether there was any kind of discipline. Um, I, I will say just for completeness that I have written some of those letters because sometimes, um, people complain about the chief, so he can't write his own letter. And, and, um, and then at that point, once the, the disposition letter has been provided to the person, they're offered the opportunity to, um, appeal the complaint to the CPRB, which then starts a whole nother process.
So the CPRB, well, the complaint is received to the CPRB. There's a, a, a case number, so to speak, that is assigned. Uh, the CPRB discusses the complaint and then they send a.
No, sorry. The, the complaint is received by the HRO, the Human Rights Office.
Mm-hmm.
It is, it is logged in and it is, and it is placed, you know, like electronically placed in a portal. And the CPRB has access to the portal, but they're not required to do anything with the complaint. They can look or they don't have to look. The HRO then sends that complaint to the police department for, and to be investigated.
Mm-hmm.
And then after that investigation takes place, there's a disposition of that complaint. And a letter goes out typically from the Chief of Police saying what that disposition is. Then if someone appeals, that's when the CPRB becomes actively involved in the, in the case as opposed to passively involved where they simply have access and can look at their leisure in the portal at any complaint they wish.
Okay, so let me go through these steps again. So the complaint is received by HRO and given a, a number and placed in a so-called, uh, some kind of, of portal for CPRB to look at. Okay? The HRO then sends this to the, uh, the police department for review.
Yes.
Okay?
Investigation.
Investigation. Then it is investigated and there's a, a conclusion, some kind of decision that comes regarding out, comes out regarding that complainant, that complaint. And a letter is sent to the complainant regarding the decision, uh, that the police department came to.
Yes.
From the chief.
Yes.
With an offer that if they're not pleased with the, with whatever's happened, that the, um, they can appeal to the CPRB.
Correct.
Okay, so let's say it goes through the CPRB appeals and CPRB comes to the same conclusion as the PD. What happens next?
Well, well, whatever their conclusion is, they have five different options for, um, for a finding. But whatever the conclusion is, that, um, that's, that's the end. It's a, it's, it's still a, um, so they can sustain, I, I, I hope I remember these. Um, they can sustain, uh, what the police chief, uh, determined. They can, um, remand it, uh, remand the case back to the police for further investigation. They can, um, disagree, I forget what, what that one's called, disagree with the chief. They can, um, the, the case can be resolved through mediation. Um, and there's one other one that is like a, uh, no finding because the, I forget, you know, that's sort of like a, the case wasn't, um, pursued by the complainant or something like that. So even in a case where they would say, we totally disagree with the chief, it still just goes back to, it goes back to the police department. And there's, there's a heightened degree of scrutiny on that, but they have no power to, um, you know, to impose discipline or anything on an, on an officer.
Do they have power to recommend?
Sure, they can recommend.
Okay.
This is why we need the, the flow chart Dennis asked for, I can see.
Dennis? So one of the big questions that we're looking at is, um, uh, complaint filed by a third non-involved individual. So in the case of, of a community member deciding that, oh geez, what I saw on this police video that's been posted in as public knowledge, or maybe I foia'd it or something. Um, and I'm, you know, and they become, they become, um, the flan, the complainte. Um, so what is their status then? And what is the status then of the, the, um, what you would call the victim of the, uh, the alleged assault or misconduct? You have then the, a third person in the community who becomes either acting as somebody's lawyer in this process or representative, but they don't have any kind of official standing in the case except that they are an observant individual. What's, what's, um, does the, does the subject of the issue then, um, drop out of the picture completely? Because they're not making a complaint, but other people are for them or maybe even in Kate, in spite of them or whatever? What's, what's that all about? How do we look, sort through that as far as appropriateness of activity?
Okay, so, um, the way, I, I do, I just want to clarify, so, that, that, that set of facts can take place. Only let's take the video piece out of it because we've been advised by our lawyer that we can't have that video witness, but let's say it's just someone standing there, right? So they're standing there, they're not the victim, they're not the victim of whatever this issue.
But there's a difference between being present and understanding the context under which everything's happening because of.
Right, but I want to get to the heart of your question, which is they're not the person who, who was allegedly mistreated by the police. They saw someone, they, right in front of them, allegedly mistreated by the police. So that would just become part of the investigation. So, um, that complaint can go forward because they, they have personal knowledge, they were there, they saw it. And then during the investigation, the police, I would guess, would approach the person involved, the, the actual victim and say, we've had a complaint, we're conducting an investigation. Would you like to cooperate and, um, answer any questions that we have? And then they could cooperate or not. And, and, but they wouldn't have any, the person who was personally involved in terms of interacting with the police, I don't know that they would have, at least not the way the ordinance is written now, that they would have any ability to, to, to stop the complaint investigation moving forward.
Okay. So the whole thing about the video thing is, I mean, that's yet one step removed from being present and watching it and observing it. And so I guess that's the real big, big question for me about, um, you know, how the process evolves or changes because of that. And I see our city attorney has suddenly appeared on the screen. I don't know if we're gonna hear a comment or not.
Mr. Simon?
Uh, yes. Uh, to expand on Carol's correct answer, the individual that physically observes, again, taking the video issue out. the individual that physically observes, again, taking the video issue out, physically observes the event happening, does not in any way represent the victim. When that individual, the observer, files a complaint, that individual is acting on their own behalf, you know, raising their concern about what happened. They are not acting as, you might call it an attorney in fact, as opposed to one in law or in any other representative capacity.
A surrogate for the individual.
Right. They are, it's their complaint, whoever files it, it's their complaint. And then it gets investigated as their complaint. And as Carol indicated, somebody may reach out to the victim. And if the victim chooses not to participate, the presumption is, is that does not in any way negatively impact the investigation of the complaint itself. So they just continue to conduct the investigation, just so happens without the cooperation of the victim. Or on the other hand, with the cooperation of the victim, if the victim so chooses.
Yeah, okay. It doesn't lessen the quality of the complaint or the fact that there is a complainable activity.
Yeah, it does, you're right. It does not lessen the complaint. The complaint is investigated with the information, you know, that launches the investigation, i.e. the complaint, whatever facts the complainant chooses to include in their complaint.
Right. And then it stands or falls based on the quality or the actual facts of the case?
That they can derive, that whoever investigates can derive from whatever sources that are available and willing to cooperate and provide information.
Okay, Carol, did you have anything you wanted to pull us on or have anything else that would provide more clarity?
I mean, the, I would say in general, I'm hearing more people saying that they would like CPRB to do the tiering. And, and I can understand that, so we'll bring that forward. It doesn't mean that it can't be discussed further, but so we'll write it that way. And then if I could just, I'll share the slides with you all and have them posted online. And then if you have other ideas about what should be included in tier A, I mean, I'm going to bring a specific set of ordinance changes. So this is, you know, there'll be lots of opportunity for more discussion on it. I just wanted some direction so that I didn't draft something that was not supported. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else from anyone? Any final words before we go vote tomorrow, if you haven't already? Okay, seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.